Oh, I said.
Quiet.
Did you hear me tell you that today?
Oh.
I'll try. It's not right.
It's the longest.
No, it doesn't.
I want to get back. Back for about a month. Teachers are all showing up, which makes it a little bit more lively around the office.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Tonight, we're going to open the evening with our public hearing for our proposed 2014-2015 budget. At this time, I'll ask Dan Cox, our CFO, to come to the podium and make the presentation. At the conclusion of Mr. Cox's presentation, if anybody has any comments, please approach the podium and state your name, and if you'll keep your comments to about two minutes, we'd appreciate it. Okay, at this time, Mr. Cox.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the 2014-2015 budget. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce the people that actually really put this budget together and managed throughout the year and do such a great job. And that's Darren Rice, Executive Director of Finance, Darren, Janice Stowers, and Karen Garza, Accounting and Business Managers in our Finance Department. So let's give them a hand. Our, the theme of this year's budget is providing a strong foundation for education and growth. Before we get into the actual budget, I like to always take a few minutes and review some of the highlights of the year that we're just wrapping up and look back and see some of the key things we accomplished. I'm not going to go through all of these because those many of them occur every year, but I have highlighted some, some of the more unique ones this past year in red. And item number four is we received a five-star rating by the 2013 Financial Allocation Study of Texas, the FAST report, one of only eight ISDs in Texas to receive a five-star rating for all years that the Comptroller's Department has made this designation. They did, they started this four years ago. We're one of only eight districts that have received the five-star rating for four years. We're also very proud of the fact that this current year that's just ending, we gave a half-cent tax reduction for the second year in a row. Our tax rate is $1.285, and it's, it's the lowest tax rate compared to our peer district, well, our peer districts, and we'll look at that a little more in a moment. And also, one of the things that we accomplished this year is we, we used a budget surplus of $17 million to build an Oak Ridge ninth-grade addition without using new debt for this project, and we're very proud of that. I mentioned the FAST report. These are the eight districts that have received the five-star rating. What the FAST report is, is about six years ago, the legislature wanted to implement a system of accountability that we've had it, we, for, Texas has long had a very great academic accountability system, but they wanted to add that accountability assessment, they wanted to add to that the financial integrity and financial performance as well as academic performance. So this five-star rating consists of two and a half stars for academics and two and a half stars for financial performance. So by getting a five-star rating, that means that we're in the top 20% of all the districts in the state of Texas in both academic performance and financial accountability. So we're very proud of that. You can see the districts that we're with there, very, very good recognition. We also monitor each year our performance as determined by the Education Resource Group. This is a private entity that monitors the performance of the 200 largest school districts in Texas, and likewise, their, their assessment or their analysis also takes measures both academic and financial performance. So you can see that the vertical access, axis is academic performance and the horizontal axis is financial performance. The objective is to be in the green box, and the closer you are to 0-0, the higher your performance. If you were 1-1, you'd be right at the 0-0 spot. So if you were the, if you were number one in academic performance and number one in financial performance, you would be at 0-0. You can see our red star. We are the fifth-rated district in the state according to their assess, assessment. Once again, we're very proud of that. We also like to look at our, we like to benchmark our budget against the state averages as a percent of our budget, as a percent. And I can tell you that when I started doing this 11 years ago, when we, the first time I did this, our spending in instruction was less than the state average as a percent of our budget. We looked at that and we decided, that's really not what we want. We want to reduce our spending in other areas and move it into the classroom. Today, I'm happy to report that our spending in our budget for the 2013-14 year was 62.31% of our budget compared to the state average of 59.1%. That 3.2% represents $11.8 million more going into our, into instruction than if we were spending at the state average. So this is a move that we made strategically over the years. We've reduced spending outside of instruction and increased spending in instruction. Another category that we like to point out is central administration. Our spending in central administration is less than half of the state average, 1.8% versus 3.8%. Our total spending on students is $780 per student lower than the state average. One of our objectives is excellent, excellent academic outcomes in a cost-effective manner, and we achieve that. I think the record demonstrates that, and that's one of the reasons that we get the high ratings in both academic and financial performance. I mentioned tax rates. When we started monitoring tax rates against our peer group 11 years ago, we, we decided to compare to spring, Katy, Humble, Cyfair, and Klein. The obvious reasons is those are the large districts in our Houston geographic area that are similar to us. We were not the lowest tax rate. Today, you can see that our tax rate is 21.4 cents lower than the average of those other five districts, well below those other districts. So we were proud of that, and we expect to keep that, keep that favorable advantage. We also monitor our fund balance. You can see that it's grown steadily over the years, as appropriate as our budget has grown. The red areas on the budget are areas where we have felt that we had enough excess in our fund balance to take some money out of our fund balance to use it for construction projects primarily, capital expenditures. Once again, when we do this, we don't use new debt to do that. You can see that we've done that three times and this year being the fourth time. This is an obvious trend of our enrollment that's been up, and it's, we don't expect that to change. These are the actual numbers. We have seen enrollment growth slow down in the last few years. However, we do believe that that is bottoming out, and we expect to see that start to increase again. This, this year that just ended, we had 1,080 growth. We're projecting 1,100 this year. We expect this to be the, we expect this number to start rising in the coming years. Certified property values, another key part of the budget. This has been a very unusual year in, in property values. We've seen a dramatic increase in the property values, up 12.6%. A $3 billion increase in property values, the largest ever in the district. And this has had a very significant impact on our revenues for this year. However, it's going to bring into play the Robin Hood effect. I'm going to talk a little more about that later in the presentation, but basically, we're going to have very strong revenues this year, but we've got to be on alert for what can happen the following year, and I'm going to talk more about that in the presentation. Our objectives for the 14-15 budget were to meet the needs of the 14-15 school year, provide a strong salary increase for CIST employees, provide a tax rate decrease for our CIST patrons, and preserve funding for the 2015-16 budget. This again relates to the potential Robin Hood effect where the state recaptures some of that growth in assessed values. Looking at our 2014-15 funding increase or available for our budget increases, we have 27.6 million primarily coming from that growth in assessed value and the growth and the 1,100 increase in ADA projected. We had an unbudgeted surplus in last year's budget of 13, of $17 million, and then the state has, has added a new twist to funding this year in order to better fund the teacher retirement system, which is somewhat underfunded. They've added a 1.5% fee on, on salaries to all the districts. This first year, the state is funding that, so they're providing 3.5 million, that that's going to cost our budget. However, going forward, we, there's no, we do not know if they're going to continue to fund that, or may be funded locally. But this year, it's funded by the state, so it is revenue for us this year. I mentioned teacher salaries. We have a nice increase for teachers this year, $1,840 raised for all teachers. Starting salary is $48,700. We think this is very competitive in the Houston area, and we're very pleased with that, and we've got a great, great group of teachers, and we feel this is a good raise this year. We also have personnel additions. The first line there is, relates to the 1,100 student growth. That's the staffing at campuses required to support 1,100 students, 7.8 million. In addition, we have a number of program additions, which are additions that we determined this year needed to be added to address understaff situations in the organization. We, we had the opportunity with strong revenues this year to look at areas that, that we felt needed more support, and these are additions to address those. Total personnel increases of 9.3 million. This is a breakdown of that, of the additions at campus for the 1,100 students additions, the addition of 1,100 students. These are, this is 150 positions and how they're allocated among the campuses or among the different levels of schools. In other expenses, we have an addition of $300,000 for utilities. We're seeing, we, we've, we've had a great trend in utilities for the last five years. We've cut our utility costs significantly due to our energy management program, but we've, we've finally hit bottom, and we're starting to see utility costs go up now. We're seeing rates increase, plus we've got two new schools opening. This, this increase is needed to address those issues. The second item is MCAD fees. That's Montgomery County Appraisal District. The appraisal district has also been overwhelmed by the growth in Montgomery County, which has been significant and is expected to continue. And of course, we're their largest user, and we get allocated a portion of their budget. This is the increase for, for the appraisal district. We also are increasing supplies necessary to support two new schools. In addition, we have a fuel increase of 175,000. This is fairly common as we add students and routes. We also have 150,000 in the budget for innovative program grants. These are in-house grants that administration identifies something that's being done at a school that looks, or an idea to implement at a school. We wanted to have some money to fund those pilot programs to, to really test out those innovative ideas. We also are putting some $400,000 in the budget for new software. LMS software is learning management system to facilitate online education and assignments. The Safety Alert software, some software that we intend to install to allow rapid employee connection with the police department in current times of emergency. And then finally, we have insurance and other items for $100,000 for miscellaneous other items. So all of our proposed budget increases are summarized here. We have salary increases, which 3.5% on the midpoint for teachers and professionals, 4% on the midpoint for parents, auxiliary, and police, total of 10.2 million. I mentioned the personnel growth for 1,100 students, 7.8 million, 1.5 million for personnel and program additions, $1 million increase to our health funding program, our health, our health plan, the 3.5 million for the increase in TRS contribution, and then 1.9 million for other, other expenses, total of approximately $26 million increase in our budget. Last year's budget revenues were 386 million. This included the $17 million surplus. 14-15 projected revenue increase is 31.1 million for total revenues of 417.2 million. Last year's budget was 369.1 million. We're looking at salary increases of 10.2 million, and then other expenses, all the other categories, personnel additions and so forth, 15.8 million for a total increase, total budget of 395.1 million. This results in a $22.1 million surplus. I'm going to talk a little more about the surplus in just a moment. The, this is a $26 million increase, 7% budget increase, larger than normal. However, if you look back over the last four years, during, four years ago, we cut our budget $20 million. So we've been working out of a hole since then. But if you look at our budget growth over the last four years, including that four years ago reduction, we've actually seen an average increase of 4% a year while we've seen student growth and inflation growth average 4.5%. And that's really our measure. We try to keep our budget in line with the growth in, in student and inflation rate. So we've accomplished that over the four-year period. This is a picture of our budget. You can see that it's very obvious that it's a salary-intensive business, people-intensive business. 88.7% of our budget is salary and benefits. The next biggest area is contracted services, and in that category is utilities, is our largest expense. Under supplies and materials, our biggest expenditure is fuel. And then finally, under equipment and other, our largest expenditure is insurance. Our total budget, 395.1 million. This is our budget by function. I'm not going to go through all of this, but you can see that the total budget is 395.1 million. I will highlight the fact that we spend, 64% of our funding is from local taxes, 36% of our funding is from state revenue. There's a perception that we're a rich district. By some measures, we are a rich district, but we still get substantial funding from the state, so that's a, that's a very important fact. We're still getting 36% of our revenue from the state. This is what I really want to, this is the key issue of this budget, and that's the potential of, that comes, comes into play with the large growth in assessed value that we have this year, and that's the potential for Robin Hood effect the following year, when the state recaptures the increase that we, we're experiencing this year. The key, important thing, the key thing to understand is the state determines our, our budget or their funding based on formulas that are, that are driven by enrollment, ADA, average daily attendance, and our, our assessed value. However, in calculating our funding, they use the prior year's assessed value because they don't have the current information, so they use the prior year assessed value. So if you look at this, these are real numbers. You look at the 13-14 year, our assessed value, our actual assessed value is 23.9 billion. That generated local revenue of 236.8 million. In 2014-15, this year that's just coming up, our assessed value has increased $3 billion. That's going to generate local revenue of 268 million. However, the state is calculating their funding this year based off of last year's assessed value, so they're using the 239, the 23.9 billion number, and they, they determine that we're due $148 million. So we're getting a total revenue this year of 416 million. Now, those are actual numbers in those two years. In 2015-16, assume that there is no change in enrollment and there's no increase in AV for the year 2015-16. If that were to happen, now that's not going to happen, but if it were to happen, then the state would say, oh, your local, your assessed value is now 26.9 billion, so you get 200. They're, they're looking at the prior year, it's 26.9 billion. We actually, we get 268 million from local taxes because there was no change, and then all of a sudden, the state determines that our funding is 116.8 million rather than 148 million, and all of a sudden, our revenues dropped 31.2 million. That's where you get, the state recaptures the revenue from the low, increase in local assessed values. So we have very strong revenues this year, but if we don't see growth in assessed values and person, and enrollment and changes in the funding formula, we could see a significant drop in revenues next year, and that's a very important point. So it exposes us to a significant drop in revenue. So we've got a $22.1 million surplus this year. We're prob, we're, we're saving that because we're probably going to need some portion of that next year. And that is the recommendation for our, our surplus. Our recommendation is to save it in the general fund balance next, to support the 2015-16 budget. It's important to point out that the 2015 Texas Legislative Session, next year's assessed value growth and enrollment growth will determine the available budget funding for the 15-16 year. Until we have a better feel for what those things are, we really don't know what our situation will be next year. So we're proposing that we save that $22.1 million in our fund balance this year, and we reassess our situation a year from now. So that is the proposal. Regarding tax rates, for the third year in a row, we're recommending a half-cent reduction in the tax rate, bringing our tax rate from $1.285 to $1.28. This is 48 cents lower than the 2005-2006 tax rate of $1.76. We're proud of that. We think it's, as I think the record shows, it's very favorable compared to other school districts, and we're pleased with that, that performance, and we, we, we hope that the public is happy with that. What's next? This was our second public hearing. Tonight, we will also be presenting the budget for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. At this time, if there's anybody who'd like to make a comment, if you'll approach to the podium, state your name and make your comments, please. All right, that concludes our budget hearing. Mr. Sanders.
All right. I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:24. If you would, please stand as Mr. Williams leads in the invocation and Ms. Powell leads in the pledges.
If you will, please pause for me for a moment of silence to reflect on world events, specifically events in the Middle East and here at home in Missouri, please. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, and one indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next item on our agenda is citizens' participation. Ms. Ferris, is anyone registered to address the board?
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to item three, consent agenda. The board has been given the consent agenda. Are there any items that we wish to have removed to discuss specifically? If not, is there a motion?
I move the approval of consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, all those opposed. All right, item four, curriculum and instruction, elementary and secondary school, summer school report. Dr. Stockton.
At this time, I'll invite Dr. Kathy Gibson, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, and Dr. Curtis Knell, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, to come and give the report.
Good evening, President Sanders, board members, and Dr. Stockton. This evening, Dr. Knell and I would like to present an update and a review of our summer school programs. We had six summer school programs. I'll tell you a little bit more about these. Passport to Learning, Bilingual Program, Camp Star, KidQuest Academic, KidQuest Enrichment, and Extended School Year. In order to run this, these programs, it takes a tremendous amount of work and preparation. I'd like to introduce to you two of our main organizers and leaders. This is Edith Upshaw, who is the Director of CNI, please stand up, and Dr. Pam Zoda, who is our Director of Federal Programs and Compliance. Thank you. Summer school principal offers the opportunity for, in this summer, 10 of our assistant principals to showcase their leadership skills. I'd like to introduce them to you as well this evening. Patricia Thacker, who is currently the principal interim at, at Armstrong, who was the summer school principal at Ford. At Houston, Mrs. Christina Upshaw, who is currently the assistant principal at Houston. Mrs. Sunny Nolan, who was the summer school principal at Glenlock and is currently the assistant principal at Colson Tough. Mrs. Sean Greeden, who was the principal at Mylum and is the, also the assistant principal at Mylum. Mrs. Krista McWilliams, assistant principal at, at Reeves. Mrs. Laura Stone, assistant principal at Patterson, and summer school principal at Wilkinson. Mr. David Kite, who is our special education lead, who was the summer school principal for the ESY program. Mr. Larry Bradfeut, who is our assistant principal at Bosman and served as principal at Bosman. Mrs. Teresa Waller, who is our assistant principal at Grangerland and served as principal for summer school at Grangerland. And Mrs. Triva Medor, who is our assistant principal at Mitchell and served as our summer school principal at Mitchell. Thank you very much. Our Passport to Learn, Learning and Tuition-based KidQuest Academic Program served our kindergarten through sixth-grade students. The purpose of it was to enhance our, enhance skills needed in the areas of reading, writing, math, and science. It was a half-day program that was held between June 11th and July 13th, and we had 1,291 students that participated. Our bilingual program was, is a program that is required by federal law to be offered to our pre-K and K students. We have gone above and beyond that, and we have offered supplemental summer school to both first and second graders. It is a full-day program. It is a full-day program, and it ran from June 11th to July 3rd, and we had 1,534 students that participated. Camp STAR is our very intensive targeted reading and math intervention program for our fifth grade students. If you remember, our fifth grade is under the Student Success Initiative. That means that these students have three tries at the STAR assessment. The first two tries are combined as for our accountability purposes, and students that need that third try are able to take it in the summertime. After our first two administrations, we have an, we had an overall passing percent of 92% when this group of students completed their testing. That moved, we moved from 92 to 94% in reading. Mathematics, we had 94% after the first two administrations, and after these group of students took the math, we moved up to a 96 overall percent passing, which I think is very good. KidQuest Enrichment is what we refer to as our high-interest summer school programs. We had six, GT Summer Camp, Experiencing Robotics, Band Camp, Orchestra Camp, Adventures in Art. We had two sessions held at Mitchell Intermediate, and 131 students attended. Our extended school year services are offered to students that may need support over the summer for loss of acquired critical skills of students or students with disabilities who have demonstrated significant regression or recruitment patterns. Participation is R committee-based. We ran two sessions and 50 students participated. These are the expenditures for our summer school elementary program. We use a multiple sources, state, federal, local, and tuition-based, and within a total This is one of our largest programs. 3,496 students participated by 277 teachers and 10 administrators.
Good evening. I'm here to share the good news about our secondary summer school programs. They're truly a great benefit to our students. And I would point out, as Dr. Gibson has mentioned, the number of students that were in attendance to the elementary summer school, and you also add the secondary summer school, the number of students that attend our summer school programs is significantly larger than the average-sized school district in the state of Texas. So essentially, we open and close a school district every summer. And in addition to the great instructional staff that we have, that we pointed out, this doesn't happen without the work of a lot of people. And I know that we don't have everyone that put a hand on it here this evening, but we have representatives from a lot of these different departments, and we'd just like to say thank you to them. So our Human Resources Department, the great job that they do, technology, payroll, finance, maintenance and custodial, CISC Police, and transportation all do a fantastic job. So I'd just like to give those departments a hand. Thank you. We had great people on the campuses as well, and we have some of our principals here this evening that I would like to introduce. We had our district-wide high school summer school was completed at Conroe High School, and the principal there was Wes Hinson, and he is an assistant principal at Conroe High School, Wes. Also at Conroe High School, we had our ESY program. The principal was Greg Coleman, he could not be here this evening. And at Irons Junior High, we ran the summer school program for Irons, Knox, McCullough, and York, and assistant principal from Conroe High School, Keith Dupre, was our principal there, Keith. And finally, at Pete Junior High, we ran our junior high program for Morehead, Pete, and Washington, and our principal there was the assistant principal now at Pete Junior High, and that's Chris Kemples. We can give a hand to these three guys. When you look at the big picture of our secondary programs, 110 teachers, 15 parent professionals, three counselors, one librarian, four nurses, six instructional coaches, and eight administrators were there to serve our students this summer. When you talk about the types of programs that we offer, we offer the traditional credit recovery summer school, and many might think of, when you think of summer school, of students that maybe fell behind in a class and needed to go back and regain that credit, we offer that. In addition to that, we offer initial credit courses on the high school level. In total, 916 students attended our high school programs. We have an online accelerated initial math credit program. That's a blended model of online teaching and classroom teaching for those students that want to advance in math. 83 students participated in that. In our junior high, we have credit recovery for those students that need the classroom credits, but also, as Dr. Gibson stated, our eighth graders have that third opportunity to take STAR. And we had similar results on the secondary level. After the initial first two testings for our accountability, we were at 94% in both math and reading on the eighth grade level. After this third administration, we bumped to 96% in both of those. So very successful programs as well. 104 students participated in our ESL academies. 34 students participated in the GED program, and Ms. Nicolini shared with me that well over 20 of those students have passed the GED this summer. So that's a great thing for them. And 35 students participated in the ESY program. For our first-time credit offering, so these are those classes that students may take, they take for a variety of reasons. It may be that they're attempting to graduate early. It may be that they're trying to provide themselves a little flexibility in their schedule, and they participate in many extracurricular activities on campus, but you can see the courses that are offered there. Our financial summary, I will point out, if you look at the bottom there, the total funds received at $391,000, and our expenditures at 330, almost 339,000, those numbers do not include transportation costs. So when those are added in, certainly, we will, we will have spent a little more than we brought in, but very healthy as tuition is collected for those students. So in summary, 1,988 course enrollments in secondary summer school. 95% of those courses were completed successfully. So we had 256 initial high school credits earned, and then 413.5 repeat credits earned by our high school students. So overall, very successful summer. A lot of hard work by a lot of great people paid off for our students. So when you look at it, a total of 1,815 students in our three locations and 147 staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knell. Dr. Gibson and Dr. Knell, thank you for your leadership. We appreciate that report very much. Next item is Item 5, Administration Bond Refund update. Dr. Stockton?
Ms. Foster, if you'll come and share your busy summer with us.
President Sanders, members of the board. Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to give you an update on the projects we've got in progress. We've taken, calling them capital improvements, because they go beyond bond expenditures at this point, as Mr. Cox presented earlier in the budget presentation. Starting with Oak Ridge High School, ninth grade campus, we added a significant amount of parking lot, parking area to this campus. You see a picture out in the front of the building. And this is an ongoing project, so it goes through, through next summer, actually, because it's a, it's a building addition and renovation. The front door of this school is also under a renovation to give the school a facelift. So we've made some alternate plans with the principals for first-day approach for the new student, for the parents when they drop their kids off. So the, the front office is in an alternate location at this time. What you're seeing now are the foundations going in for the building expansions. This is a, a look at the science lab areas. This building is getting science labs added, classrooms, art labs, and then expansion to the cafeteria. The Oak Ridge School Road improvements, which is a project that encompasses the entire Oak Ridge School Road from the feeder in front of Oak Ridge Elementary on the Interstate 45, all the way around through the campus to Hauser Elementary at Woodson Road. What you're looking at here is a, is a look across the front of Oak Ridge High School, where a major part of this roadwork was undertaken. At this time, I'd like to tell you that this roadway construction is open. We were able to get the entire roadway in place this summer. Striping is going down, signage will go on over the course of the next couple of months as we work with the county through some traffic patterns and some other issues out there. But traffic on this roadway should see some, some ease. We're not going to say that it's going to fix all the problems out there, but it should alleviate some of them as we anticipate more growth on these campuses. Attached to this project, this project, this picture is a week old now. This is the new connector to Woodson Road off of Hauser Elementary. If you drove by there today, you'd see that it's paved with curbs, and tomorrow will be open for their meet-the-teacher night. And this is, again, looking, Hauser looking back towards, back towards the Oak Ridge High School area. And it is, again, a lot of dedicated turn lane surface to try to give access to the campuses and still allow traffic to pass as people are turning in. Vogal intermediate additions, again, this is a classroom addition. It is underway. The foundation's structure, roof deck is in place. You can see the mechanical systems going in at this time. Knox Junior High. Everybody's been accustomed to seeing this picture. The good news is, is this project is coming together very nicely. What you're seeing now is the finished product. The interior of the classroom is done, clean, ready to go back to school for next week. The contractors are still there. They're cleaning up detail every day, but by and large, this school is running now, and then for the first day of school, it should almost be like we were never there. Except, we have new light fixtures, new ceiling, new air conditioning, new ductwork, new fire sprinkler system, so the building should see a very, we're hoping to see a significant improvement in the overall efficiency of that, of that building operation. Our multi-campus front entrance security upgrades, as you recall, this project touched 24 campuses. So this is just a representation of what's, what's been installed. The equipment is, has been installed at all 24 locations. We spent last week going over some details. This week, the contractor is there making the tweaks to those systems as they go to make sure there's uniform, uniformity across all the campuses. Next week, when staff is back, we should have the ability for the contractor to go back to each campus individually and train each individual front office staff, as well as some of our technology folks, my departments, some maintenance people, on how the system operates, so that we can all, all be better attuned to what, what we're putting into our campuses. Our multi-campus skylight project, this affected six campuses, which were Anderson, Galatus, Heesinger, David, Powell, and Bush. If you recall, this is to eliminate the skylights in those buildings. Those skylights were at the end of their useful service life. So we've changed those buildings to put actual, a roof structure over those, over those skylight areas. What you're seeing are the hallways down the grade-level classrooms, and then what they look like over the, over the libraries and gymnasiums. This project is about 95% complete. The work on the interior of the buildings will be done by Friday this week. We've got about 50 light fixtures that are remaining to be installed at the end of the grade-level corridors at all six campuses. David is the one who sees the most work, because it gets a new metal roof structure, and that metal roof panel is being installed now, and that's for the entire building, not for the entire metal roof that was there on the original construction. So David is being returned to its original, original state. Travis Intermediate, if you recall, this is a masonry project, where we're replacing the exterior masonry and windows on the original, the two oldest parts of that building. As you can see, the, the progress is moving forward. This project is actually ahead of schedule. We were, our contractor was trying to put together heroic effort to get the entire project done by the end of the summer, 25 days of rain in June, although good for the grass, as bad for construction, slowed us down a little bit. So we're not quite done with the front door. Accommodation has been made with the principal on that campus for the opening day of school, but within the next couple of weeks, the front door should be open, and then a couple of weeks into September, the project should be complete, and we began demobilizing the contractor on, on that project. The project was initially expected to run into October. We'll be finishing it in September. The intent also is to return the building to more of its original appearance, so the windows going in more closely match what was built in the, in the late 20s and 30s The unique part of that project is the exterior wall was a system altogether. So as we're doing this, we actually removed the exterior walls of those two, two structures. So we're actually also return, trying to return the interior of the building to a, as it was originally built condition as well. Things are not exactly in the place they used to be, because our walls are thicker for insulation and other energy-saving features. But the moldings, the trims and stuff, we're trying to replicate to the best of our abilities, so it retains its, its original architectural integrity. Our LED light fixture replacement project, this project that started right after our last board meeting. At this point, we have installed just short of 6,000 light fixtures at the Woolens High School, Oak Ridge Elementary, and our cruiser at the Conroe High School now working. This week, they started working overnight, so they're working from 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, with anticipation of finishing the entire 17,000 fixture project somewhere around November 15th. November 15th is the cutoff we've given the contractor to achieve the rebates for this project, the completion and post-inspection by our utility providers, has to be completed by the end of November. So we are on schedule with that project. And those are the major items. There are, we did have a busy summer. We have lots of, lots of loose ends we're still chasing, but we are going to make it.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We appreciate it. Any questions?
Great talk. Item 6, Business and Finance, a adoption of the 2014-2015 Official School Budget. Dr. Stockton?
It's Mr. Cox to come back to the podium for the next several items.
President Sanders, members of the board. Dr. Stockton, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the 2014-2015 Official School Budget as presented in the public hearing tonight. I recommend that you approve it. Motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor and all those opposed in motion carries. Item B is consider adopt and set by order resolution the 2014 ad valorem tax rate to support the 2014-2015 budget, Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate A and B, Debt Service Tax Rate. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Cox.
I recommend the Board of Trustees approve the attached order resolution to adopt a 2014 tax rate of $1.04 for maintenance and operations and 24 cents for debt service per $100 of taxable valuation to fund the 2014-2015 Official School Budget. The tax rates are required to fund the maintenance and operations and debt service budgets for the 14-15 fiscal year. State law requires the two tax rates must be adopted by separate motions. The total tax, total combined tax rate of $1.28 per 100 is a reduction of one-half of one cent from the prior year. I recommend that you approve this.
Motion?
Second.
All right, that is a motion and a second for the Maintenance and Operation Tax Rate of $1.04.
There's actually a wording that has to be said.
Okay. Okay, then let me move. All right. That the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.28, which is effectively a 9.87% increase in the tax rate, consisting of $1.04 per $100 for maintenance and operations rate, and 24 cents per $100 for the debt service fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item C is transfer of unassigned fund balance to the debt service fund. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Cox, please.
I recommend the Board of Trustees approve the attached resolution authorizing the transfer of $16 million of unassigned fund balance to the debt service fund. The fund balance transfer of $16 million is required to service the debt during the 14-15 fiscal year and minimize the 2014-15 tax rate. The estimated general fund balance at 83114 will be 104 million. Recommend that you approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And finally, Item D, Financial Reports. Dr. Stockton?
Ms. Rice, if you'll come make the presentation, please.
Good evening, President Sanders, members of the board. Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure this evening to present to you all the financial statements for the district of the month of July. The first statement, the statements that we see tonight will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. First statement we're going to look at this evening is the balance sheet. It'll include- It'll include our assets, liabilities, and fund balances. One of the things that we always track is our property tax collections. I haven't seen it in the last few months, so I'll show that this month. Collection percentages is flowing right along with where we've been in the past, and we feel very confident, you know, that collections are coming in well. Income statement will show the revenues and expenditures and fund balances for each one of the funds. You know, local revenues, once again, is our largest source of revenues, property taxes that we just discussed. Food services comes from food sales, and the revenues and self-funded come from premium, premium contributions. General fund balance, we're projecting an increase in the fund balance of about three point one million dollars. As Mr. Cox said, that'll push to about a hundred and four million dollars at the end of the year. Debt service fund balance projected a slight decrease of four point three million to about thirty-six million dollars. Child nutrition, no change in the projection, but we are showing a decrease in that, in that projection. Self-funded insurance, as we know, summertime is big on insurance plans. Once again, for us, it was. For the month of July, we had two point seven million dollars worth of revenues, had expenditures of about three point nine million. It's almost a one point two million dollar loss in the plan for the month. For the year, we've had thirty point one million dollars worth of revenues, thirty point six million dollars worth of expenditures for a, a loss currently in the plan of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Participation in our wellness centers is still going well. We had four hundred and forty-seven participants at the Oak Ridge facility and a hundred and twelve at the Conroe facility for five hundred and fifty-nine for the month, and we're averaging about five hundred and eighty-two each month at our wellness centers. Bond transition plan, the hundred and nine million dollar bond transition plan, we've currently spent fifty-six point four million dollars. We have an estimate to complete the forty-nine million dollars, leaving us with a projected forecast of a hundred and five point five million, and that'll leave us with contingency in that plan of about three point four million dollars. Investments for the month, at the end of June, we had two hundred and eighty-one million dollars invested. End of July, two hundred and twenty-eight point seven million. Our pools, our Capital One, our WAM is one day. Our longer-term investments are U.S. Treasury notes, seven hundred and four days, giving us a total WAM of our portfolio of eighty-seven days. Yield and maturity of our portfolio is point two one five, and our benchmark, the ninety day T-bill is point oh two five, considerably above our benchmark.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Cox, I failed to mention, but thank you for your leadership in the budget. We appreciate it very much.
Good job, sir.
All right, we have no executive session items?
No, sir.
Nope? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion, second? All in favor? Adjourn. Thank you for coming tonight.